The planning board has sent my email to Hasbury Press and the full star on our official account and Google on the whole cover of the Mississauga building. Mr. Rollphone, Mr. Meyer, Mr. De Blasio, Mr. Trivitt, Mr. Lopez, Mr. Lindley, Mr. Costello, Mr. Sharkey, and Congressman Levis, Mr. Forte, and Mr. Piero are absent.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to the October twenty first, two thousand and twenty four meeting of our Balmar Planning Board. Please join the board in the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of Native Nations, co-alignment, honor, job, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you very much. I don't believe we have workshop discussion this evening, so I'll move through the agenda. Can I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes from the July fifteen, two thousand and twenty four planning board?
I'll offer it.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. De Blasio.
Yes.
Mr. Trivitt.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Mr. Lindley.
Yes.
Mr. Sharkey.
I'm saying.
Thank you. This evening, we have one application on the agenda, that of Charleston Beach LLC at six oh six Main Street, a new mixed-use building. Yes, letter of record shows that Mr. Myers is accusing himself of this application. Thank you, Mr. Myers. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking down on how long the season period of the after this applicant. The applicant is in fact made by Charleston Beach LLC to develop six oh six Main Street, and the proposal is to present a mixed-use commercial residential project for that property that's block sixty five, lot eleven. The property is in the borough C four redevelopment area, S R D zone, and subject to the redevelopment requirements of the C four redevelopment plan. The property is seven thousand five hundred square feet, it's located on Main Street. Very close to the street. The applicant is proposing that the first floor will contain a commercial space of five hundred and eighty-five square feet and six hundred and fifty square feet of stairs, hallways, entrances to gain access to the second and third floor. The second floor is proposed to have four three-bedroom condominiums, which he should continue to return for, and have rooftop access three of the four bedroom, three of the four three-bedroom units propose a balcony on the second floor. In accordance with the regulations, the commercial use of the property is a permitted use and the proposed residential use is permitted use, and the flat door area ratio and permeable surface building height will all comply with the plan. I have three witnesses to see them, Mary Hearn, the project architect, William Jensen, our project engineer, and John Duckina, the project planner.
Terrific. Before we go any further, I know there's quite a few exhibits we need to mark on the record. I also want to confirm we have jurisdiction to hear this application. I believe a developer's agreement has been executed, but if you could, if you could help us walk through each of those.
Sure. So to be exact, I can read Doug's handwriting. So planning board one is the T D R C report dated September ninth, two thousand and twenty four. P B two is January fourth, twenty four. R B E, report on completeness. P B three is.
Let's go slow, so we're gonna go through all these. I'm sorry, what was the date on that first? Was January fourth?
January three.
January three.
Twenty twenty four.
Okay.
All right. P B three is January seventeenth, twenty four. It's also R B E. P B four is March twenty sixth, twenty four. Also R B E. P B five is December seventh, two thousand and twenty three, from Lobb. P B six is February fourteenth, twenty four. Also from Lobb. What was that dated? February fourteenth?
Okay.
That was, I'm sorry, right, six?
Correct. P B seven is July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four. Another November Lobb. P B eight is October sixteen, twenty four, from R B E. And P B nine is October eighteen, twenty four, also from Lobb. And then I have. For the applicant, I have A one is the application. A two is the preliminary major, excuse me, final major site plan for six oh six Main Street. A three is the architectural plans for six oh six Main Street, these are the five sheets. A four is an environmental impact statement consisting of two sheets prepared by William Jensen, dated November second, from the proof. A five is a stormwater management statement, three sheets also performed by our chief prepared by Mr. Jensen, dated November two.
That was traffic in fact?
Uh, that, we're getting there. Next one's six, traffic in fact. A seven, I have as.
What was quote unquote again?
Stormwater, uh, was A five. And then there's A seven, Stormwater Basin Area Investigation Report, dated November three, that's from Dynamic Earth.
Okay.
A eight is the boundary and topographic survey by Justin Hedges, dated October eleventh. And A nine is the response to the planner engineer, looks like January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, from Jensen. I think that should be all right.
Okay. To the question of jurisdiction. Do you address that?
You have to.
We have jurisdiction confirmed? All right. All right.
So this application seeks no variances for one way or for root text flow. I'd like to ask whether to swear Mary Hearn, our architect, I'm no offers an expert in field of architecture, but this is our project.
Thank you. Do you swear the testimony you're going to give to the board is true?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want me to qualify?
I'm going to offer that this, Erin, as a licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey, we're offering her as an expert athlete. Do you wish to hear her credentials?
No, we've had her before previously, and thank you for coming to see her.
Thank you for accepting.
And we accept her credentials.
Okay. So, Mary, in preparation for this application submission, did you prepare any exhibits and designs?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Does the application seek any variances?
Uh, no, it does not.
Okay. And it's in the S R D zone and subject to the S R P.
Correct.
Okay.
I just would, I don't know if this last packet of drawings was submitted and put into evidence.
Oh, we did not.
Well, we didn't ask to move it into evidence yet, so.
I'm sorry.
I can do that right now.
Okay, we'll hold that then.
Did you, or others under your direction, prepare these plans and exhibits for the submission tonight?
Yes, we did.
And they were all under your direction as a licensed professional architect?
Yes.
Can you just describe what each package.
Did everybody get one?
I have others here.
So we were booked for the technical design review committee, and we prepare presentation boards, and those are represented here so that your boards, these members, could have it colored in front of you. We'll walk through the boards as well. After we had that meeting, we made minor tweaks, which we'll walk through, but also we've added a color rendering, which is on the board. I don't know if you'd like me to mark that separately than.
Yeah, so let's make the packet A ten?
Yep.
A ten, thank you. And then we can make A one.
Thank you. So in the packet are floor plans, identical to what was submitted to you in black and white previous to tonight for your review, but now they're colored to help the conversation. So it's the lower level is the first sheet, the second sheet is the second floor, the third sheet is the third floor, the fourth, and I'm gonna go back through these. The fourth sheet is the rooftop level. The fifth and the sixth sheets are the exterior elevations. And then the seventh sheet is a colored, a colored front elevation. My fingers are marking here. The following sheet is the rendering, so it's identical to A eleven, that was just marked in. The last two sheets are aerials taken off the internet just to help you locate the project and the surrounds, so that we can talk about that if needed. So again, these are, the drawings are identical to what you already had. There are no changes to it physically, other than we've colored it to help the conversation tonight. Okay?
Okay. So Mary, why don't you begin by describing the first floor?
Okay. So the first floor consists of one commercial space, a lobby for the residences, stairs, elevator, mechanical rooms, a meter outpour, and trash enclosure. Those that aren't familiar yet with the project, we're driving to the south of the building on a new driveway, parking under the building and beyond the building. So there's also parking underneath the building. First floor is rather small in comparison to the upper floors, so that we can provide a pathway to the parking and parking. There's also quite good parking on that lower level outside the building. And then on, you want me to continue?
Yeah, do my question on the exhibit ones.
Sure.
You have an area in a purplish color, blue, and then of course, white and blue. So why don't you just quickly identify those three?
And this marries to the site plan, is that marked in individually?
No, it is marked here. You want to mark, you want to mark that in too long?
No, because it's the same plan we have.
It is. I just want to tie the floor plan to the site plan, because we run out of paper on our architectural plan, so, and I'm referring to sheet one.
Okay, before you do that, then I'm gonna cross it to the board, if you have an engineer plan is prepared by William Jensen, licensed professional engineer who assigned the plan, and when he comes up, we'll have him give some details about it, but since it's gonna be referred to here, I'd like you at least mark it for identification, but it is suitable for evidence, if you wish to move it.
So again, at the scale that we printed this, the portion of the drawing at the top of the sheet attaches to the left side of the drawing, and there, and it sits here on the site plan, back to here, the building, and then the trash enclosure, that's one story, is here, just to give you a sense of reference, because usually you're looking at a site plan that shows everything first, so we have Bill to do the site plan, I'm just focused on the building. Okay? So in the lavender color at the front is the retail space with the toilet room, and then in the blue is the common area. So people will be able to drive in, park behind the first floor portion of the building, and come in a door at the north, at the north side, and then into an elevator or a stair. Then there's an independent stair at the back of the building, which will provide a secondary egress from the upper floors. So the front of the commercial space is almost all glass, and then solid wall up against the north side. That okay on first floor? Okay. And then on the next sheet, in the second floor, and you can come up the elevator, up the stair that wraps the elevator, or the back stair, come into a common hall, and then enter one of four residential condos on the front, or the right side of the sheet is what phases name. That's a green unit, we're calling that unit number one. These are two-story units, so you're looking at the first floors of four units. Thanks, Jeff. And then the blue unit up at the top of the sheet is unit two, the yellow unit is unit three, and the red unit in the back is unit four. So they all have common access to the hallway, to two stairs, and to the elevator.
Mary, let me interrupt you for one second.
Sure.
Between the elevator and the stairs in the rear, this is a continuous hallway?
Correct.
So, and from the hallway, each of the four apartments access?
Correct. That's correct.
On the second floor.
That's right. So the main entry to each of the units is on the second floor. And on each of those floors is an open concept kitchen, family dining, there's a bedroom in the first unit on the first floor and a full bath. In the second unit, there's a half bath. In the back two units, there's a full bath, no other bedrooms on that level. There's an outdoor small balcony off of unit one that faces Main Street. There's a small covered balcony off of unit two that faces Main Street, and there's a small balcony off the rear of unit four that has view to the back. We don't have a balcony on this level for unit three, because the view is not as attractive. So we didn't want to eat space out of that unit for a balcony, but there is some common out, or there's private outdoor area above. So then if we flip to the next page, you're now on the second floor of each of those same condo units. Thanks, Jeff. And now your bedrooms and bathrooms on the second floor. So unit one at the front has its own, each of these units has its own interior stair that gets you from your own first floor to your second floor. And then there's more bedrooms up on unit one, there are two bedrooms, two baths. Unit three, all three bedrooms are up there and two full baths. Unit two, there are three bedrooms, two full baths. And in unit four, there are three bedrooms, two full baths. There's laundry on this level for each unit as well. And then you can continue up your own interior stair if you switch.
Can I come back to that for a second?
Yeah.
Is it a code requirement that the elevator and the stairwell go out in that central stair here?
No. It's not a code requirement.
Because it doesn't access any of the apartments?
That's right. So on this level, that common area is for someone to get to the common area on the roof over. There's no connector to that common area. You see, it shrinks way down, and the second floors of the units take up more space.
So you need that to get to the other section of the stair to go up to the roof?
Correct.
That's really what the purpose is?
Right.
Okay.
Is there a need for the elevator to stop there? Looks like you have a door for the elevator, are they actually gonna stop there, or?
Um, they probably, they can stop there. It's not necessary.
You're using the elevator.
Right.
You're hanging it up, or you can go upstairs.
Right. And then go up the stairs the rest of the way, so that may be closed off. That's a good point. Unless you find a need for it there.
Okay.
No, that's a good point. Okay. And then if, if we're okay, we'll go to the next page. And now we're on the roof. So you can come up that elevator or come up the stair, and now you're in a common hall with doors to the north and south to get to common roof area for A C units and a generator. The generator would back up all the common areas, the elevator, lighting, smoke detectors, fire alarms, everything that is common.
Where are the generator at?
It's right, I'm sorry.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. So those doors that go out to the blue area really lock off, they're for maintenance personnel?
That's correct.
And they're segregated from any resident deck area, by some type of privacy fence or something?
That's correct. So there are little, exact that, there are separator fencing, and, and those act also as a way to, to blind the A C units, so we won't be, you know, to see, not seeing them. I'm not coming up with the right word.
Shield.
Shield. Shield the units from, from sight. So you can see the colored stairs, so there's five sets of stairs that go up there, because there are four, one for each unit, and they're color coordinated with their units below. And thus, when we talked about unit three not having a balcony, just looking into another building, we feel that having that rooftop is, is, we feel good enough, instead of carving out space from that unit and providing a balcony with no view, so. There's then private rooftop for each unit, so you could come up in an enclosed heated and cooled stairway that's roofed, up onto, then walk through a door, your own private rooftop unit that's surrounded by a parapet that's tall enough so we can't fall off.
How, how high is that parapet?
It'll be forty-two inches.
What other? And I don't see anything called out on this plan. My assumption is there won't be any sinks, or grills, will there be gas connections up there, anything like that?
I'm gonna defer to you, and you're not sworn in yet, but.
Well, it's entirely possible, but that would be typically standard. At this point, the, there isn't a design of the guest, this should be.
Well, I, I think it's gonna be relevant as we start to get into further discussion, because one of the concern points will be how these are gonna be used, so I think we'll need to make some decisions about some of that, so that the board can have a thorough understanding of how they're gonna function up there.
Right.
So we're gonna wanna ask questions about trousers or porticoes, or any kind of lighting up there, string lighting, you wanna, I mean, this will all be part, because these are gonna be for sale, there'll be condos, there'll be bylaws, so I'm sure it'll be able to restrict all those that may be of concern, as the board may voice its opinion, so I think we'll vet that as we get further into this, but I would be prepared to have some, some decisions, at least on, that we can put on the record.
Would you be prepared to make a decision?
All right. Thank you. Please continue, Mary.
I'm not aware, I didn't know, so I don't wanna answer what I don't know, and I will defer when I don't. The next, any more questions on the plans? I'll go to the elevations.
Please. You have a question?
No, few questions.
Go ahead.
So again, for sale condos, I know condos in architectural and building world is different than apartments and whatnot. Do you require continued fire separation through the roof with the condos? And if that, how does that work with, I know you have a screen, or, you know, one of the five words you're trying to come up with.
Right, it's not required.
No, it's not required through the roof. So then, what, then, I expect you to say, you have the, the screen and fencing, how tall do you think that would be versus how high the parapets are?
I think they'd be the same height.
Okay, so you're doing the height of the parapets?
Yeah, forty-two inches.
Forty-two. And that's obviously a code requirement, handwriting, where the protection.
That's correct.
And then while, while I'm here on this painting, the elevator is throwing me through the, what? This elevator doesn't serve a purpose of actually accessing any of the condos rooftop personal space?
Correct.
Right? So there's no A D A access, which I think, it's okay, the creed is probably, you know, for the condos, the condos have to use their own stairs. The elevator, is that only being put there for the possible service of A C unit and generator for helping?
Yep.
That's not intended in any kind of A D A public access? Not public.
No.
If, if someone, you know, condo A says, hey, I have a handy kind of person, they'd like to come up to my rooftop, can you let us in? I mean, that's something that maybe you wanna consider, you know, a way to do that, would it be, you know, gates in the fencing?
Right.
To get, and locked gates for the association members? So I just think it would be beneficial to the, maybe the condo owners to have some sort of A D A access with, you know, permissions of all, together.
We have another guest.
Who do we know?
There's a cricket.
I take it it's freaking you out?
You're screaming.
Something other than a cricket, I'll say, but I think it's a cricket. It's just caught my eye.
We may need to call the police.
I think having the elevator there may help in getting furniture and things up there if, if needed. I, I wouldn't want to not have it, but it is almost.
As I said, it doesn't actually provide that.
That's right.
It doesn't, it doesn't provide that, so.
Right. So if those.
It's an expensive thing just for maintenance spending.
Fair enough.
Well, I think the nice thing about it is that, to Mike's point, you have access points on the rooftop through gates that you can put in.
We could put gates, right.
To get to the rooftop area. You really don't need it on the floor below, because it's a bedroom level.
Right.
But the ground floor level, you'll have it, so I think it's a, I think it's a nice feature, you could bring, you know, someone in, just disabled up to the rooftop, shouldn't be having, you know, dinner or something up there, so that's a good.
To the chair, if I might, with regards to the elevator, I think the benefit of having the elevator is to get to the second floor for the units.
Oh, absolutely.
And if you're putting the elevator in to get to the second floor, it's probably not that much more expensive, because you're already paying for the elevator, the shaft, and everything else, so.
Yeah, I mean, he's already got the elevator.
It's only gonna work, it's a normal thing.
Now you just, you don't have access ways with exclusive privacy fences, so.
Right, right.
I think there's a way to get there.
Yeah. You have to be very neighborly to get to the back one. Yeah.
I think someone would be realistic. Can't imagine a issue with that.
Yeah, that would be the challenge.
With the proper rules.
No, good points.
That's, those are my questions for the planning so far.
Mary, yes. In the rooftop, one and two have complete privacy, right, because the walls are surrounding them?
Yep.
Is it possible to have a higher wall between three and four?
Certainly.
It just doesn't give any privacy.
Certainly.
People.
The, the ceiling heights of these stair, I'm gonna call them towers, but rooms is eight foot, it could be somewhere between forty-two inches.
Sure.
But, yeah, give them a little. And possibly.
I would go up like five or six feet with that.
Fair enough.
I would represent it, I would think it would look better to that, not exceed the height of the parapet.
Well, I think what Mary, what Lynn is saying is potentially gradually bring that height down, but I wouldn't start at an eight, working your way down to forty-two inches, I would start at like a six, which is a good visual break.
Yeah, and the usable portions of those two back rooftops, you wouldn't have to hang out right where they meet for some privacy too, so we can work with whatever you think is right.
And what about generators for the units? I'm sorry, is there a provision to, or any thought to having generators for each of the units?
We've added.
As opposed to just a common?
Yeah, we've added battery backup generators, wall-mounted generators within each unit since we met last time.
Okay.
They are shown mostly.
You were saying met last time, that was the T R C?
I'm sorry, yes, T R C. So they're shown on the second floor of each unit in the closets. So they're little battery backup in the laundry room in the unit one, in the water heater closet in unit two off the hallway in the yellow, unit three, there's one where the furnace and air handler closet is, and the same at the back of unit four, in where the utility closet is. We've added those at, at the, you know, recommendation of the K N O C.
Go on, clear, and how, how full do you want the privacy wall between those, unit three and four?
I feel like six foot is probably a good length to start with, and work, six foot, working your way down to forty-two inches.
And then just.
Yeah, I mean, I could decide how you want this depth or whatever.
Okay.
So that would be a condition of the application?
Sure.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
So.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Not at the right time, but firefighting access to the different floors, does someone want to talk about that? Because as, as I'm looking at this, you know, the firefighters are coming in and they wanna clear the building, come through the first floor, they go up the stairs, right, to get to the second floor, they can access all the, all the units at the second floor, but now there's, let's say, unit number one, they can't get into unit number one, because on the, on the second floor, now there's a fire right at the entrance to, 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 on the number two. How do they get, how do they get to the unit? to the second floor, they can access all the, all the units at the second floor, but now there's, let's say, unit number one, they can't get into unit number one because on the second floor now there's a fire right at the entrance to, to, yeah, under number two. How do they get, how do they get to the unit?
So we've provided the required Egress windows on the first floor and the second floor of each unit also. That, that meets the requirement of Egress.
So they would have to get from the outside, because they're not gonna be able to access through the, through the...
And that's fairly standard for residential units, yes.
Do we share these, do we share these plans with our fire department so they know when they're...
Fire marshal, yes.
Fire marshal will get it, not be there?
We didn't get a review letter from him.
No, he did review them, but he didn't have any comments.
And comment.
And just for the record, the entire building will be fire sprinkled. Still a different issue, but to that point, right.
I think that's one of the challenges, Mayor, of this floor plan is that it has the benefit of individual stairwells for each unit, which is nice, but from the downside, it creates four stairwells that the fire department would need to manage through.
It's important that they know.
Yeah.
You know, going into blind areas and, "I can't get up there."
No, no, it's a good point, really good point.
So then, on page six, are the exterior elevation identical to what was submitted to you before the meeting? I'm sorry, five? Let's stuff together, here we go. So at the top is the front, top left is the front elevation, and the bottom is the south elevation, but up at the top right, that gets added to the end. So that's the trash enclosure, that's one story. That gets added to the end of the bottom drawing. Sorry, we ran out of paper there.
And a question, a question for the attorney.
Yeah.
Is the commercial space in the developer's agreement, is there a designation of what that commercial space will be? I heard it mentioned in detail earlier by Mary.
Our client does not have a tenant.
All right, so there's no restrictions on that commercial?
So zoning ordinance fills out with the permitted uses.
Well, and the fact that we're sharing parking, which will be...
Yeah, so we'll go through that with the engineer. Okay, thank you. One question on the elevation, which was brought up by our professionals, is the clearance for emergency vehicles, Mary, you're talking about that elevation on the front. What's the height of that drive-through area? I know it's twenty-two inches or twenty-two feet wide, but how tall is that?
Ten feet high.
Ten? So we don't have any comments from the fire marshal. Do you have any perspective on emergency vehicle access and how that does compare to what would be sufficient?
I think all your fire truck overhead doors are ten feet, so I don't think there should be an issue. I will double check. Did you look that up?
No, but there's no requirement of access, so everything would be...
From the street? So we're not expecting a fire truck to get behind the building?
I think to that point, all of the entrances are on the other side, so if someone's gonna pull up and go into the building, I mean, I think we're, we're thinking about firefighting from the outside from the parking lot, which they oppose this for and whatnot, that would reach down. But then as far as access, the truck wouldn't be driving that way anyway. You wanna pull up to the front of the building and, because they're coming down that left elevation on the north side, I need to add for them to get in.
So we got a ten-foot height?
We do.
Okay. What about EMS though?
I think that would...
They need to go that way, they just wouldn't park here, structure, whatever, they need that, but we need ambulances to get through that.
We'll save that for the engineer, that we can probe that question about access from Main Street, walkway access as well as other access, so. And Mary, just in case, is that ten-foot height the max, or is there anything that can be done? Is there something structurally that's holding that ten-foot height, or is there something else that, is there any flexibility in that?
Just if we went higher, I think we've got, and I'm gonna testify to height, we have a little wiggle room on the overall height, but just the stairs get longer, so we just wanna make sure we can still fit our stairs to the second floor.
And what's the weight of the height?
So on the height, we have...
Forty-five permitted, and you're...
So there's a couple criteria, I'll put them all in and then we can talk about it. At the street line, the center line of road, we're at thirty-eight foot three inches, we're thirty-nine six, so we're one foot three inches lower than we're allowed. The highest point of the roof to the center line of the road, we're at forty-three, we're at forty-five feet is allowed, so we're two feet lower. And within thirty-five feet of the residential property at the rear, we are thirty-five foot six inches, we're at thirty-six feet is allowed, so we're six inches lower in the back. And that could be, I don't know, can that be, that can't be independent, can it, the height in the back? No. So we've got six inches of wiggle room before we would trigger variance on that rear height requirement.
So let's revisit that when we get to the engineer, because they wanna move that up to a ten-six.
Okay.
Just to provide a little more room, sure, an ambulance decides to drive in, I think that's six inches might make a difference, so.
The height, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out the elevation. Looks like the height that you're calling up is where you're allowed thirty-nine six, and you're at thirty-eight three. When you come across, the roof actually steps down, the parapet actually steps down, so it looks like you have even more room on the same elevation.
On page five?
Looking at that front west elevation, the left side, that's the brick, that parapet seems, is it, is it just like an illusion? That thirty-eight foot three you're showing is to the brick parapet, whereas what would be the standing seam metal roofing and the metal coping looks to be a little bit lower, so you may have even more wiggle room than what you stated.
Right. What, Jeff, do we have a height on that?
I don't know what that is.
So that's, that's at least one foot difference, or eighteen inches difference, right?
Sure. The whole building has to go in that space.
Yeah, I think everything has to go.
And he's saying with this, just have to be careful.
That makes it over your floor heights, as we're discussing, which is something...
Yeah, floor heights, that's a match.
I think the floor heights are gonna, you're not gonna want to...
It's all got pulled.
That's probably a unit break, but then you're gonna have a step, you don't want to do that.
There is, it's an exterior wall, so if you're a flush header pushing up into the wall alone, you could always play around with that, you know, lifting just the header up and out.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
Structurally, you have several...
Yeah, I see on that same sheet, you see that that's lined up overall parking too.
Correct, yeah, that's all over there.
Okay. Please continue, Mary, I'm sorry.
Happy for the questions. Any attention, thanks. So...
Do you know, do you know for sure the fire would fight, they would, would even fight even that way?
I don't know.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like anything.
I don't think so, but I don't wanna necessarily not allow them at least some ability to get under there, so. Mike laid out a scenario where they're probably gonna park on Main Street, which likely to be the case, but an ambulance may as quickly drive under this, or a truck may when there are fire trucks.
You didn't get a fire, a report from the fire department?
We did not, no.
I'll get, I'll circle back to materials, but then on the next page, you see the rear of the building at the top of the sheet and the north side of the building at the bottom of the sheet. And they've obviously married to the floor plans. We've got a lot of in and out going on on all four sides of the building, setbacks and setbacks. Some of it is so that we can bring light into the building and not be at the zero lot line for windows. I think it's important to bring light in when we can. Obviously, we need them at all the bedrooms, but bathrooms when we can, hallways when we can. So we've stepped the building off of the property lines on that north side to put windows in.
And how, how deep is that step in, again?
That step in?
Yeah. Two feet? Or less?
Well, it's a minimum of three feet because can't have windows within three feet. Hang on.
Okay. Yeah, you have side windows there, so it's at least...
So I'm gonna defer, is it three foot ten? Jeff lines up with the front. Jeff's with my office, so I knew, he did the drawings for me on this with us.
Fourteen.
Yes, say again? So the windows...
Fourteen, it should be fourteen hundred.
So where on sheet two, second floor plan, at the bottom of the sheet, that's, that step in is four feet. I think it's three feet ten, I think it lines up with that dimension all the way to the right. That has a brick face on it, so maybe it is four feet. Oh, right, it's four feet.
So it's approximately four feet.
That, that step, that particular step in, yes.
Okay.
And then if you look at the third floor plan, which is the next sheet, three, we have the same, but we have, we have two step ins so that we can bring light into the bathrooms and the stairwells, and not just have, you know, a straight blank flat wall. So there's a lot of reasons we think that that's a benefit.
And that's the board's opinion?
Right, because we are at the sec, at that, on those upper floors, the majority of the building is right at the zero lot line, so we can pull in and grab those windows and hope if our neighbor ever develops, they'll be as sensitive at that one.
On the rear of the building, this is something that'll come up, I think the engineer and also, something we always discuss is the light, lighting of the balconies and what you're actually seeing on the back, that rear balcony on the rear elevation, to ensure that you're not, you know, looking into a neighbor's or, we're just gonna wanna get this from the engineer, the distance between that balcony and the rear property, rear lot line. And also what kind of lighting will be on the back of the building? Mary, maybe you can testify to that?
There in particular, it would be recessed in the ceiling, so that...
Yeah, I couldn't tell that is a, that is a sopit?
That's a covered balcony.
That is a, all right, I couldn't tell that, so I think that would be a condition is that...
Yep, perfect.
Recessed.
So no walls?
No wall there, right.
No walls, no. Any parking lot lighting, would it be on the building, or would it be more in the parking lot?
Our civil engineer has a...
All right, we'll ask, we'll ask that question again.
Plan that shows, shows the barns to the test, move in and apply that.
Mary, interpret, Mark, thank you very much.
Before we move on, could we go back to the ambulance going through the building? Check the Google, of course, and it's nine feet is the height for an ambulance, an ambulance to get in, so it can't have any incline or, you know, might top out. But if you look at this, what would you envision? The ambulance going to the back stairs, go up that way, because there's no access, is there access to the lobby in that area to take an elevator up, or?
Only if you chose to go in the back way, but you, you're just as close from the front, so.
I think it's a matter of flexibility, Lynn.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I think, you know, Mike, the lobby will lay out a scenario where you probably would have an emergency vehicle fire or otherwise park on Main Street and go down the sidewalk, you know, on the north side of the property to get to that main entrance and up the stairs there or up the elevator there, it's probably gonna be an elevator that can handle a gurney also. So I think that's one scenario, another could be that they drive in and then go up either the main lobby stair or the rear stairs, so they have the option. But I think the concern is more so about height, that you've answered around that nine foot, than it was, you know, kind of defining how emergency vehicles wanna react, because it will depend on the situation, I think. But at least we'll have the flexibility to handle either way.
And we'll make sure Bill talks about if there's any pitch to that street and how much, and the driveway.
When you say, Bill, the draw...
Bill, be inside in here.
One last, I'm looking at the front west elevation, just the front of the building, there's the bump out on the left-hand side.
Yes.
That bump out, does that go to the lot line, or is it...
Sorry, the front...
Here, there's a zero on the other side, might be helpful.
Is it zero?
The other side.
No inches. It's zero right at the lot line.
So that's right at the lot line?
And, can I ask Bill a question?
Well, he's not under oath.
All right, then, I think you should know what the right-of-way distance is, okay?
Mary, just on the elevations?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, may I perhaps, it would make sense to swear Mr. Jensen right now, so we can answer these questions and we can...
That's fine. Please swear your name.
Bill, stand before him, please.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give to the board is true?
Sure. Jim, I'm gonna offer, Mr. Jensen's a licensed professional engineer, he's appeared before this board and has been set by as an expert. I'm gonna offer his credentials, you wish to hear a little detail?
No, he has proved before, we've accepted his credentials, welcome, we accept them again, thank you.
For this period of time when Mary's testifying, he'll supplement that as needing to conduct his own testimony when she's completed all the other opinions, Mary.
Thank you. Mary, just a question. The south elevation, the front of the building, that corner of the building will have some exposure, correct? The other, the building south of that is not going right up against it, correct?
That's correct, there's a driveway on the neighbor's property at the north end of their property.
Right. So my question is, that side building facade, is there anything we can do to make that more attractive? That's gonna be a visual for the foreseeable future? So that whole sidewall really has, I'm not necessarily saying it needs to have windows looking at a building next to it, but some way of breaking up that facade so it looks more attractive from Main Street?
So if, if you look at sheet five, you're talking about the left portion that you can see in the...
Correct, it's just a field of, of side, there's party or whatever.
But we could, we could mimic the window fenestration that's back behind there in trim.
Okay. Bill, I think we should do something there just to break up that field.
And on both floors?
Yes, on both floors.
So, so there's a pattern of the windows and on the third floor, we could mimic that pattern moving forward, and then maybe underneath those windows, but not windows, but trim that looks like windows below that.
The other, you know, a lot of times when we see, you know, loads of those kinds of flat roofs, they do the terraces, you know, we're looking at slope, the front, no, the trellis off the front, the metal roofs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, having a little bit of that slope roof on the front, you know, gives it, you have the ability, appearance of a slope roof. Would you consider carrying that along the side because you can see that?
Sure, if you look at the, that same identical elevation, the parapet pulls in a little.
I see that.
So we would do that to pull that parapet in.
Yeah, I would consider, because it looks just, again, you see the elevation there in three D?
Yep.
Where you can see that right side of the building, and it's very clean.
Just feels like it's chopped off.
The windows would help, and I do think they'd be really, really awesome.
So this would happen in, so that's that, would be okay with that?
It'll be okay with setbacks and everything, having that extension?
So, no, that's what I was just talking about. If you look, but we could pull the balcony in to, I don't know what number this one was, this one.
I think it's part of that same exhibit eight.
It is, it is, with that sheet, we would, we would pull the balcony in just like it is shown on the side, and then not come out any further with the roof, but just pull it in and lose a little of that rooftop.
So we can run that all the way down that side?
Yeah, we can.
She has to be acceptable, but I think it would really be good. Again, rather than a brick wall, even though it's not brick, invisible?
Just on unit two?
Right, correct, just on unit two, correct, front unit.
If I understand correctly, you're requesting this architectural change that we just discussed, and Mary Hearn is obliged, how could you go, and you find that acceptable?
So, yes, and to outline that, that would include, I'll call it faux window trim on the second, third...
And Mary Hearn is a boss, how could you go and you find that acceptable?
So, yes, and to outline that, that would include, I'll call it faux window trim on the second, third floor. And then the carrying of the standing seam roof to simulate the front on the side of the parapet wall.
And and if I could, if it does, if it cuts in for the depth of unit one, you see the door upon the roof. That gets us out to unit two, so we wouldn't keep coming.
That's right, so.
But we'd be far back.
Far back.
We'd be far back.
Not unit two, but unit one, you would carry that through.
Right, and then add the windows trim down at the same patterning and something low on my, in trim, probably three and three.
Okay.
Okay, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As a condition of the application, you accepting of that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good suggestions.
So before we let Mary go, I'm not sure if our professionals have any questions that they'd like to tackle and then we'll look down the board. Just I know it's been a little bit of open forum here, but I'll ask the board as well. Ms. Bill, any questions?
I don't think I have any questions for this weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, nine percent.
Thank you. Board members, any open questions, architecture, before we move into civil? Thank you, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Well, I have, just to make sure.
Sure, your witness, please.
No reward is certify, review and correct if necessary, the ADA access to review required, correct? That was the first one, you ready?
That was a suggestion, do we wanna make that?
No, that would mean you're, you are promising to put gates through private spaces to other private spaces, is that what we're doing? Is that, was that the answer?
We offered it up as a suggestion, not a condition, it is the owner's, at the owner's discretion as to whether or not.
I just wanna make sure that the gates, and I had separately the gates on the rooftop, that they tie together and that would be the prime individuals, so I don't.
The only condition we had on the roof was the six foot high separation between the two adjacent units breaking down or stepping down to forty two.
Between units two or three and four.
Correct.
And that would basically run out of the main street, the noise out. And it'd be six foot, I think you called it out six foot above.
Six foot.
Smoke down.
Table to forty two.
Not up there.
Six to table to forty two would be, would go southern end.
Correct.
Okay. It's already proposed to be sprinkled throughout. We confirmed that the access to the fire truck is ten feet and we discussed.
Which that one's still open, we made a wish for ten six, so sit on that one.
Wouldn't approve from stairs?
And we discussed no trimming modifications to the south side, basically architectural enhancement to that portion of the city. In accordance with the discussions that the board, our witness, Mary, the architect, have. So the only thing that's open is ten feet access.
Bill's gonna address that. I just wanna make sure I've put everything on the record that I have.
Mary, if you think of something else, we'll bring you back up.
Mr. Chairman, there were, there was some comments about color, at the last meeting, were you colored? Did that, was that addressed? Well, I'm not sure, Mary's a great question, right? The only one that probably raised it. Is the color rendering elevations that are included in A ten currently representative of the colors?
Yes.
That'll be depicted and used when.
Yes, and they are different than what was shown from the P D R C.
When we came to the P D R C, there were recommendations made and that exhibit reflects those recommendations.
And and we're open to vary that if necessary, but we feel that that this is a strong color that marries well with the red of the brick and the black. Do you like it or you don't?
I like it.
It's not making.
Any comments, questions on the elevation?
Or do you step aside? I'll be here.
Yeah, why don't you not leave? But I'd like to call one Jesse.
Oh, I wasn't leaving the room.
He's our professional engineer. He was speed freak.
Their mind.
Bill was separated as an expert on board, so.
Bill, did you tell him?
You were others under your direction, particularly plans and designs that were submitted to the board.
Yes.
Okay. Could you just describe that to me first?
Sure. It's a part of our A two plan set, it's actually sheet five, I have up here is the lighting plan. You want me to go over the?
Sheet five.
It's eight, uh, sheet five. Will we go over the? So we, as we designed this with Mary's team, we came up with the twenty foot wide access way in. Everyone was, there were some questions about the the height under there. So the ten foot height that Mary's team was talking about, it measured from the finished floor of twelve up to ten. The design, the grading in the front of the building were at eleven point three elevation and then in the back of it is eleven point five roughly. So you pretty much would have the ten foot six inches that you.
Repeat those grades one more time.
Sure, in the front of the building, if you look at the grading plan, I think it's sheet four.
I'm stuck on five, lots of moved sheets right now.
In the front of the building, I believe the elevation is eleven point three two.
Okay.
And then in the back corner of the building, it's eleven point five two, I believe. So that would give you, the board was talking about having a ten six, that would actually give you that.
Yeah, I think, I think right, you have those, the personal concerns about grading, I think. So it sounds like we're in pretty good shape with that.
And also to, just to confirm, typical, a, a typical type one ambulance is nine foot four inches, like that's kind of how we designed it.
What was that height again?
Nine foot four inches.
Okay.
So the, we anticipated allowing police and small ambulances in there, but firefighting, we anticipate all from Main Street.
Yeah.
With hoses and fire trucks and things like that. And as was described before.
Would have raised a question had he had concerns about that height, because he had no comment, correct?
Yeah, I checked with him a while, everybody was talking and he said, yeah, that's, they would park on Main Street where there was an adjacent parking lot, but they would never go behind the main.
The fire marshal confirmed that, okay.
Can you, we're kind of flipping through the pages, I'm sorry.
Not so.
You said you actually get to ten foot six with the green, can you run through that one more time?
Sure, so if you, you have the grading plan open?
No, I'm still stuck on five, but I see, I see.
Okay.
Spot elevations.
Those are actually on five, is actually, that's the lighting elevation, so sorry.
All right, all right.
Page screen.
It should be four.
Got you. Eleven three two.
Yeah, so the left, in the part of the building, it's eleven three two. In the rear corner, it's, there's a typo, it should be eleven five two, but it should be at the corner of the building, which is, it's kind of like not in the corner.
Okay, got it.
So what the architect's plans, their ten feet is actually measured from the finished floor of the slab of the building, which is elevation twelve. So then you go up to twenty two. So that would, you would have ten and a half feet, approximately ten and a half.
What is the finished floor of the second floor? It says twelve point five, but that, that can't be right. What is the finished floor of the second floor?
Uh, so the twelve point five, that's the finished floor of the actual, um, yeah, it's the first floor where the elevator is.
It's the elevation.
Got you. No, yeah, I was wondering, I was like, what the height of the second, of the next level is.
Yeah.
The elevation, you wanna have that.
Okay.
And I'll ask Mary one more time, who's still on the record, the ten foot you had called out was from finished floor?
Correct, that's what our dimensions from, yes.
Great.
Can we go back to lighting, five?
Sure.
Thank you.
I think, I think over the lighting first, since we're gonna have this. So we designed the lighting for the, the light for the outdoor parking area. Once you come through, the light fixtures, there's two wall mounted light fixtures that elevate that height eight foot high, that'd be shining down. We specifically picked that height so there would be no overflow into the residential properties. And very, actually, there's no overflow into the other property as well, to the side.
So the zero.
So those are zero spools.
Cause I had made note of the one that's towards the back of the, back of the property. There, are they just, are they shielding?
Yes.
So they just trying to.
Yeah, we have like a house shield on all of them.
Okay.
So they wouldn't be, you wouldn't look at the, the bolt itself. Then in the back, there was recommended at the T R C meeting to have baller lighting to help, uh, to help light up the area in the parking spot, which we added. And there would be no spill there as well, the ballers are about four foot high and we're proposing a six foot high solid stock fence in the back as as one of the buffer. We're also proposing plantings where we can, uh, around the property where the fencing ends in, in the back area.
Is that fence material?
It's PVC, what PVC solid file?
Solid.
Solid, I'm sorry, I meant.
He did say.
I did saw it.
Solid, right, thank you.
Yes, solid vinyl, robust fence. The access driveway coming in, like we mentioned, was twenty foot wide, it's actually more than double what the existing is, currently is between nine and ten feet wide. And it provides two way access. We have nine parking spaces, one's A A, the handicap space. The two other closest to the building will be signed for retail or the commercial use during day hours, given nine to six, nine to five. And then residents can use that, um, after those hours to park overnight and stuff.
So it's two spots.
Correct.
Like visitor spots, maybe?
Uh, just feel like the overflow, what's the shared parking?
Whether we use assigned spots per condo or?
They, they could be assigned based on the units, they were assigned, those would be in the back.
The four in the back, right, would be assigned.
Correct.
I, we were planning on assigning four under the building.
You're gonna assign those as well?
Yeah. Or no, assigning four under the building would be four or in the rear.
Okay, so there'll be the ones for the retail in the back, the commercial.
Right, the two, the two in the front would be for the commercial that could be utilized. Then the other two underneath would be signed for the residential and the ones in the back.
That's not what I just heard, so I heard is that the ones in the back are going to be flex, the ones under the building are gonna be assigned. So the commercial ones would be against the fence, or there's two or four.
I'm trying to do that right now, I don't think that's.
That's correct.
Yeah, let's clean that up.
The commercial, the commercial spaces would be at the rear against the fence and the four under the garage would be for the apartment.
So they'll be assigned, and in the off hours, assuming daytime use, the four against the fence would be open for condo owners to use, not assigned.
Business hours.
After business hours.
Whatever they set in, five to six, in place of six, right?
We'll update the plan.
Thank you.
Through the chair if I may.
Please.
And I, I, I just wanna make sure that we're clear, the four flex spaces, they're gonna be available to the condo owners or to the property owners at no additional charge, right? There's not gonna be a situation where you're gonna like, the, the way the parking works out, we need to provide the parking spots for the property owners on the site in accordance with the requirements. So what's the intention with the unassigned spaces?
Well, they're available for your tenant to use.
His point is if you do this flex space, you don't comply with parking, that's what I was gonna hear, is that what you're saying?
No, my concern is that if you have two bedroom units and they're supposed to have two spaces per unit. So I wanna make sure that they get it.
Did you understand that? You need two spots per unit, that's why when you were saying flex, it wasn't calculating how you were still complying with parking.
So for off hours, they'll need to be assigned in order to comply?
Does that count, or you have to be assigned twenty four seven?
So we have the shared parking.
Yeah, our, our plan will discuss the parking, I think that that's something that you'd be, there's only nine, nine spaces and one E V, I think, so it shouldn't be that quite the.
Can we figure out where the E V is?
The shared, the E V is in the back right corner, the last two spots to the right, this, those have the E V ready.
And what type E V?
Charge or, or?
Yeah, like, how many kilowatts?
I don't think they figured it out.
Is it level one, level two? And would there be any additional electrical required? So for example, if it's a level one, you would require a, a extra box, right? If it's a level two, you just run it off of.
I don't think they decided that yet, but it will be pre-wired for whichever they decide.
So, so the, it's one of the things we should probably decide, right? So level one, which would bring us to over, I think, I believe, uh, over a hundred fifty kilowatts, would require, um, extra, um, uh, util, electric utility, like, um, the box.
It's a forty.
Like, uh, it's now.
Transformer?
Yeah, like a, like an extra transformer, if you were to do level one versus just level ten.
Well, I'm not sure we have jurisdiction over that. So I don't think we have jurisdiction over what charger you're using, what the voltage is. What we do have as part of the agreement is that you're going to provide two E V charging stations and I just need confirmation you're going to do that as part of this plan.
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna provide two spaces for E V. The level of service at this point has not been determined by.
The owner will decide that.
Either way, the electrical charging stations that will qualify for.
Right, they'll be installed and ready to go, not just wired and future installed, they'll be installed.
Yep.
Are they in development?
Question I have, I don't have any experience with, but there's, I just wanna make sure there's no sound issues with the charger. They don't make, they don't make noise that's gonna bother the house owner or anything, right?
I'm not a hundred percent familiar with how they work.
It's a operating problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
If they're making noise, then we'll have control.
I know, I have chargers in a few of our buildings and they don't make any noise, it's not like a transformer that. There's no humming and coughing, so there shouldn't be any issue with that. It's a good question, it should be up against the neighbors, so it's a good concern, but I don't think it's one that we have to. Yeah, please continue.
So, you want to continue?
Sure. Uh, the trash enclosure is in the rear, as previously discussed, of the rollout containers that will come out during dedicated times, uh, during the week. If ones are picked up, it'll be brought back into dedicated spaces.
Let the, managed by the township or by private coverage?
Should be, I believe it's gonna be the township pickup, but the, uh, rolling in and out would be per the units themselves.
Is there any concern with this one parking spot that's up in that corner near the trash enclosure?
So the, the design of that spot, we have, it's twenty four foot wide behind it, so they can do key terms to get in. And there's also, to fit me the space, determining the space in the units, about five feet, so it's kind of typical of what they do to that pump out when you pull out, so.
I was worried about something now.
Same question for the E V space on the right, are they able to back out towards the trash enclosure so they don't have to back out the whole driveway?
Yes. It's just, you know, there, it'd just be a tighter movement, but they, that's the design of that one. They could pull straight in and they could back out towards the.
It's E V, drive sideways.
The walk, the walkway towards the north of the property, everything is A D A compliant from the street up to the park, uh, handicap space and beyond. We also have four areas for parking, you're locking up bicycles, the, the north side there. Uh, the entire project, stormwater management system, all the roof areas will be piped into the underground system that's in the back area of the property. It will also, underground piping that goes out there front and I agree with the professionals' comments, the boards are okay with it. The overflow, instead of having bubble out of an inlet down the driveway, uh, have it piped out to the curb of the street. So any overflow during crazy storm events would flow into the gutter line of the street instead of over the walk, walkways and stuff.
That's conditionally application about that pipe to have some overflow to the face of the curb.
Correct.
Where was that bicycle stored again?
So if you're looking at the property, underneath there's the parking spaces or.
Those little rectangles.
Rectangular, rectangular.
Is there a fence along that side?
So the fence, actually, no, it's, there's not.
Okay.
The fence ties into the rear of the trash enclosure, kinda where the landscaping is there, about.
And it continues all the way down to south side?
So it goes around the back and then it goes to south side up to where the, the building pillars, the first pillar is a whole of the structure.
And it appears as if you're changing the fence or maybe it's just that.
It's, I think it's, yes, it's the same fence, six to five fence. There's a curve though. Uh, the, I think the, the line we're here looking at is, is the curve line, along the.
I'm looking at the front from the overhang out, it appears as if it's a.
That's, that's on the adjacent property yours.
Oh, their fences, and your team for that?
Unless they have to come back, I think it's, I believe it's on their property.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Utility questions?
Sure.
Um, I guess we start with electric, electric room is, you know, like an Alco, towards the back of the building. I'm just gonna presume that's gonna be all underground from the nearest telephone pole to that, to that building, okay, no over it. And then they seem to have a great spot and a good location for them, I don't understand where the, you know, how many gas meters shown? And the gas line looks to be, it's on the north side of the building, between the two buildings. So the gas company, I don't know if you've spoken to them yet, may want to place those meters on the, on, along that walkway on the front of the building. And that's gonna be a problem if it's, the, the width of that walkway might be a problem. So what is the width of the walkways, my next question?
The, the width of the walkways is four feet. So there's a meter room in the building for the utilities, if you look at.
Yeah, it says meters.
So that's where they're planning on putting the electric meters on the one side and the gas meters on the other.
So they've agreed to do internal meter installation?
No, they're.
They haven't.
It's an Alco.
It's open.
It's open and not.
What's the size of that?
About four, four foot wide, ten and a half feet long, by ten foot high.
Four?
By ten.
Four by ten, okay.
And then ten foot high.
And is there, uh, and this may be a, a mayoral question, is there a code separation between gas meters and electric meters?
I'm not certain.
Any, any professionals know?
I don't, I don't think there is, but I'm, I'm not a hundred percent, I prefer to utility companies when we talk them, but I have not.
I don't know the answer either, I just never see, personally never come across.
Usually you.
Gas, electric meters in the same room.
So it'll end up being five meters because you'll need a house meter.
Right.
So if you're supposed to, you could put a separation wall.
Yeah.
To have electric and gas separated by a separation wall.
There's plenty of room there, but I'll check on the distance requirement. The intent is for them all to go in there if possible, not on the outside wall.
You don't have a location where you can put on the outside, so it needs to go in there.
Right.
Or there'd be some kind of, all right, let's just note.
Yep.
The gas meters, electric meters not gonna be within the building footprint, not along the walkways.
Yeah.
As, as a condition.
With a two hundred amp service and probably needing disconnects because your meters are gonna be brought to the con, the main panels are gonna be brought to the condos. Those electric meters are gonna be large for each unit, it's gonna take up a lot of wall space and I know you can't put a gas meter right below it, so I don't think that. I don't think that one's gonna come.
They can stack the.
We'll match them out.
Stack the gas meters, but not below the. Electric's gonna take up that ten.
Yeah, we'll match them out.
It should be conditioned, but they're all internal, so it doesn't affect the walkways. Those are the only questions on the site, I have.
The adjacent property has existing condensers, I think you showed them in the plan. So essentially the, there's a small two or three foot strip of land left on the property to the north.
Those are not condensers.
What are they?
Those are trash bins.
This is adjacent.
These are existing on the site, there aren't condenser on your neighbor's property.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant on our property.
No, along the walkways.
Yes.
So they're gonna remain in place, I mean, you're just gonna walk by those as part of your walkway.
Correct.
Get the property line.
Correct.
And no fence?
We don't have a fence there, our area is open.
Is that, is that part walkway and is that like a paved area on your neighbors, or is it gravel grass, do anybody know? Maybe the owner.
I believe it's stone or parlor.
It's, it's grown up gravel, it's been grown and stuff, I looked at today. It's not, it's, it's not his problem, it's his name.
No, he's not for the, for the owner.
Still, we, we, we specifically need to put a fence there, so it just feels enclosed, that's, that's why we're in, I mean, that was our physical.
I would certainly encourage you to talk to your neighbor and see if there's anything you can do to prove that while you're there. Certainly up your instincts. I wanna talk about the rear buffer, the twenty five foot requirement. Can you talk about how you're meeting that requirement?
Are we specifically asking about the setback requirement to the buildings or the twenty five foot buffer?
Twenty five foot buffer, not the setback.
So the twenty five foot buffer area. I just wanna take a measurement real quick. So the, the lower portion, twenty five foot buffer from the back parking area, the lower portion of the trash enclosure, about, say six feet past the parking space, the trash enclosure would be in the, that buffer area, we talked about it.
You said the parking spaces were twenty four feet, right?
The parking spaces, I believe, were nineteen feet, then another twenty foot. So the trash enclosure is eight foot high, we have a six foot high fence and some plantings that were planted in that area. They're not gonna see the plantings, but the, the six foot high solid fence reveal in the area. So the building itself, besides the small portion of the trash enclosure, would not be in the twenty five foot setback, I mean, the buffer area.
So that buffer is really the cushion for the R seventy five that runs behind you?
Correct.
That's what we're talking about here?
Correct, and we, we have the fencing, um, is really what we're utilizing, the six foot high solid fencing that's called.
The trash enclosure is not the roof, is it?
Trash enclosure is. I believe it's open, it's open.
Is there a reason it's eight feet, the trash bins are four feet, you're not putting a dumpster in there?
No, and we'd be happy to lower that.
I can add the fence a little more and.
Even at six feet?
Lower the height of the trash enclosure wall.
Right, so to not as visible to the neighboring properties, maybe with the six foot fence.
Yeah, cause it sticks up.
It sticks out, it's purposely a buffer to not see a building so close to your properties, so why not?
The only concern would be if something's sticking out of a dumpster, I'm, we're fine, I believe, either way. But if anything were, like, if a lid was open, but, right.
Any trash or dirty carpet or something up against the wall.
Right, but it'd be fine either way.
Block that issue, but put it wherever you want.
I mean, if.
Or has it, you know, would it rather be ahead of the fence that's sixteen, sixteen feet away from that, about?
Right.
Yeah.
Sixteen feet away instead of twenty five, or just let it be eight feet tall, but you're definitely gonna see that, the two different difference there. Prevents your, you know, little buffer, a mild buffer issue.
Yeah, I'd prefer to go six feet. So this way the residents behind it don't necessarily have to look over at the trash enclosure. I mean, something's gonna stick up, it's gonna stick above six or if somebody drops a sofa in there standing up or something crazy like that. And you all chance it might stick up, but for the most part, it should be a normal day and you shouldn't be able to see it. So you have fence, you have some landscaping, you have landscaping behind your trash enclosure and you're lowering the trash enclosure down to six feet.
Are we talking about a dumpster, a small dumpster or trash can?
So there, there are the ninety six gallon roll out containers that you typically see, with the engine wheels, so one person pull them out.
Yeah, they're not full.
They're not like, trash trucks not going over there.
But they're the standards, except for more residential. Well, so if they're using our service, they need to be our size, right?
Yeah, I think we limit that, you actually have a good point there, we limit the, uh, the size, our contractor that we use limits the size that we have. I think it's fifty, I know we also limit the recycling, a while back they were staggering on, I don't know if you remember that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring it up, that the ninety six gallon work, if you're using.
So why don't we make it an addition to the application that you'll adhere with the, the borough's trash and recycling container requirements? Condition, which limits the size and limits controls, all that.
Of course.
Right?
As a buffer, uh, what's usually meant, maybe Christine could say, what's usually.
This was actually Christine's comment, so if you don't mind, Miss Bell.
Uh, typically we require, you know, a combination of plantings and something like that. Um, this is kind of a tight area there, I think, um, you do have some plantings, right, what kind of plantings on?
There are more shrubs, there is, there is no trees, more shrubs.
So ultimately, you know, this is up to the board, which is, uh, important section, then the board may consider alternatives to some of this, that way create an effective buffer. I certainly, I think the reduction in the size of the trash enclosure is a good start, right? Because we wanna ensure that, um, the residential properties that use of this are sufficiently buffered from, um, this property. And I think the testimony earlier that the balcony that faces east, um, will be enclosed and they'll be know, um, there will only be useful sites that, that is good. But I don't know, you know, if you would like to see any additional plantings, maybe some higher shrubs, you can certainly require that.
Yeah, so I was trying to look at, thank you, Miss Bell, um, I'm not sure what the size of those plantings were. I see the landscape plan, but I don't see what they are.
Yeah, they're just small containers and like twenty foot, thirty to thirty six inch high.
I don't think that really adds up for it at all.
Can we, uh, yeah, I, I would certainly encourage you to think about reducing the quantity, but increasing the caliber and height of what's in there. Because I think if we can do a better job of shielding that trash enclosure with some higher shrubs or trees.
The greens would.
What?
As opposed to white.
Well, in addition to the, you wanna fix the shrub, but they're not gonna be mature from the Yggdrasil, that's for sure.
No.
Right, but I do think some additional height that potentially one day, basically, you know, be higher than the fence, I think that would be beneficial.
If you propose a higher fence, then they, more.
Well, it's not gonna go higher than six feet on a proper fence. Are we talking, are we talking about an eight foot fence to add to the buffer?
How tall do you want the shrubs?
What's that?
How tall do you want the shrubs?
Right, can we use this, Bell?
I think, you know, there, over five, you know, if they put in some arborvitae or something like that, might be, you know, a little bit taller.
So we start maybe a four to six foot?
Yeah, that'll grow.
And you can reduce the quantity?
So we want to, we need to pay for that, our space, so we need those.
There's twelve by twelve in that, but, yeah, they'll, they will rub it into that basin, that would be a landscaping issue.
When you pick the species, focus on something that doesn't, you know, we don't want green giants, you want something that's gonna maintain narrow, but get the height.
Right.
So pick the appropriate species to do that. None of us are landscape architects out here, we all have opinions, we're gonna look for you to work with, your landscape architect to come with something that's gonna get the height and not the mass in terms of, uh, some type of shrub, but let's start with a four to six there, let's look at, uh, there looks like, yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten shrubs. So if you can reduce that, that's fine, you know, reduce it down to four, five, get some hardy plantings in there.
And the trash enclosure wall to six.
Down to five. The other thing I was, I wanted to propose to the board is, you know, rather than a six foot stockade fence or PVC fence, um, we could consider a five foot fence or a decorative top, so that it breaks that up a little bit, looks more residential style than a commercial bland six foot fence, any thoughts on the board on that?
I find the top pieces, if it's lattice, really attracts more, more, so it's technically.
Yeah, that's a good one.
That would be, that would be against that direction, but there are some other, you know, changes.
Any thoughts, or just stay with the six?
Six is the best buffer for as an entry.
Okay, stay with the six.
I would prefer the privacy if I live in that house.
So, Miss Bell, do you feel like that adequately addresses some of the concerns?
Yeah, and obviously we can review the plantings, you know, in relative compliance.
And again, the height of the trash enclosure?
Stays at six.
Six.
All right.
Through the chair if I may.
Yeah.
Is there, and this is for, a question for the engineer, is there an opportunity to pull the, um, pull the parking spots back away from the fence and create some buffer planting in that area where you can carry the arborvitae road down? Because it looks like your entrance to get into the trash enclosure probably might be able to pick up three, four, five feet. And then potentially, so you can protect the trees, put in a wheel stop so the cars don't hit the trees.
So the, the access way around where the parking is, we have a twenty four, twenty four foot wide roll out for vehicles to back in and out. Um, moving the parking farther away, we just reduce that out.
Reduce it out, down from twenty four.
Twenty four to, if you wanted to, two feet would be twenty two.
It's really, that, that area is really gonna be a K turn area the way that you've got it all the way out, people are gonna pull in the parking spot and they're gonna do it, they're gonna perform a K turn.
And EV.
Yeah, what about the other, you're doing a K turn?
So.
If there's a way to get that, a strip, like you were saying, that.
Yeah, if we're gonna go for vertical, I mean, that could help with the arborvitae, you could, you're gonna put more of them in and plant them so they're at four to six. Just in the future years, you're gonna see a visual impact, if somebody's standing in the east, the eastern backyard looking. Somebody standing in the east, the eastern backyard looking, wanting to be towards the other side. Their line of sight will pick up that, it would break up for them, because they're going to be looking. But if we're, if we're concerned that the new apartment would work, I would leave that to the, the, the engineer.
The only other thing would be to reduce the parking space, even area that.
During nineteen?
Yeah, nineteen.
Which is, normally it's either eighteen or twenty.
Yeah.
Nine by eighteen's or ten by-
Yeah, we're, we're, sorry, it's eighteen.
Area, area eighteen. There may not be an opportunity to do that, depending on, you know, the, if the engineer can throw on a template, show us that and still work, then, then that could be something we can definitely do.
So if you want to, um, let the professionals take another look at this to see whether or not it's adequate space for the K-turn, because our preference would be to reduce it, put the two foot buffer in. I'm not sure I'd go four to six, I might go a little smaller along that line, because they're going to take off and then they'll be approaching all the vehicles.
Right.
But if we could look to bring that down to a twenty-two with maybe three to four foot high, our provideings along there, and curb stops, wheel stops. Just, we need you to do a turning radius analysis, just to make sure you can do the K-turns in and out of there. And if it, if it does work, that's our preference. Um, so we'd like that to be a condition, that they'll work through that, the two professionals, to take a look at that. Is that an acceptable condition?
So if you're proposing that as a condition, are you determining whether it's a professional?
Yeah, we'll see, and we'll trust our engineer, we'll make the analysis.
I don't think we're watching this session, we're giving a-
Yeah, I think the turning radius analysis would be pretty worthwhile, I guess. It's not like we're trying to fire truck back there.
With fence.
Yeah. So I'll bring up the parking, we want all of the place with that. Do we have a clear answer on what's going on with parking? What's dedicated to tenants? What's going to be, so is the underparking will be dedicated?
Yeah, there's, in fact.
Oh, that's some plan, right? We're going to bring a planner of that, excuse me.
Lay that out.
We'll let the planner, yes. Yep. At some point, we're going to want to talk, I had mentioned it earlier, about the use of the rooftop, but I guess that'll be for the owner probably more so than anyone else to talk about.
Well, what, do you have any more? I mean, the application seems like-
Not my rooftop, I didn't understand what you have in mind.
It's almost like the city unit owner could use it as they so choose, provided they weren't creating any nuisance. They might want to have a chair up there, or have a-
Yeah, I, I think, I think the concern is when it starts to impact the neighbors, you know, as far as, as, as what's installed up there. I'm not talking about the event itself, you know, having, you know, ten guests up there.
They might do swing steam, or you can't play on them.
Well, look, I think the bylaws will take care of that. What happens, noise ordinances, all that good stuff.
When you control sound and whether you have to, a certain volume of that.
Well, I'm assuming that'll be part of what will be part of the, the bylaws for the association, so I'm less caught up in that, but what physically is intended to be installed. So there'll be potential for a gas connection up there. I'll assume, Barry, that's not a fire code issue? Could put a gas grill up on that roof?
Not a fire code issue, I don't think it's intended, though.
Well, our clients don't intend it, but if the fire code prevents it, then maybe there's a, a owner that would want to have a, a fire connection.
Yeah, but you don't do that after the fact.
So does the owner intend to put gas grills and fire connects up there? And I'm not pushing already, I just want to understand.
If it was permitted, the answer is yes.
Yes, okay. So is there any string lights going up with poles or anything like that?
There would be poles, there would be string lights.
And no trellises, no pergolas, nothing like that?
Well, they would like to, they would be right to do trellises and string lights.
We don't want to commit residents from, you know, decorating and having a nice space up there.
So you want to be, have the ability to do that?
We would like, subject, obviously, making sure that they're connecting them all in a safe manner for windows and all that stuff. But we would like to have that opportunity.
Because they'll need to be anchoring and other things taken into account during the design, though.
Anchoring, maybe the grill part of the pan against me, especially if it's got a gas connected. We are, you know, very high-risk area. So a gas, a true, any grill, really a true gas connection to a grill up on a, you know, on a rooftop in, in a town like this, uh, is to me, you know, no, no, it's just a safety hazard, possibly rolling. So maybe making it, i- if you put a grill there, it has to be permanently attached or a, you know, kitchenette type built-in kitchen grill, that is not on wheels or can literally blow, not off the roof, but never out.
Our client is, uh, is willing to, uh, we'd like to have the opportunity to do that case, if the buyer would like to do it. And so if you, you would want to require that any grill would be, uh, fixed in place?
Yes, yeah, a frame-mounted kitchenette, uh, you know, outdoor, outdoor kitchen type.
Urban structure?
Oh, yeah, rather than anything that can move around.
What is the surface of the, the rooftop? The floor?
It's lightweight, uh, pavers up on, um, stand, stand-ups.
And what is the weight capacity with, uh, and kitchen with bread and?
It, it'll need to go down to the-
No, it'll be a hundred pounds per square foot. It'll, it'll be overdesigned, it will be fine with that.
Yeah.
In this special roof installation, you put down under that, use the pedestals with weight and stuff.
Yeah, that, that would be another function for the building designation, because-
It's a good question, though, but that all gets taken into consideration when it's, when it's live load there.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Good. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, the, the, the trellis was something the board would, was available to?
I'd just hear any comments.
So the only thing I would suggest is that anything that is secured or built on the roof is done with a permit.
Of course.
Right, so, I mean, it goes without saying, but after you get the building sealed, if somebody says, I'd really want to have a trellis, and you tell them, go ahead and do it, they got to get permits for it, right?
What about pipe limitations?
Yeah, but-
We still probably wouldn't make that.
Yeah, I mean, they have to comply. Right now, I think it would affect their pipe limitations, although the, it would have to be lower than the, well, I'll defer to the architect, because I think, uh-
We have a peaked roof up on those stair access points that's higher than the, the trellis would have to be to use it. You have to obviously fit under the trellis. But that's an eight foot plate plus a very low slope roof on those stair access points.
So your height calculations go to stair access points?
To the top of the roof on those, yes.
To the top of the roof on the stair access points?
Right.
And what was the, what was the board's thoughts about having string lighting or any kind of lighting on the trellis? And was there a discussion about what lighting was going to be on those stairwells?
Uh, we would, there would be required lighting at the door points. Um, they would be, we don't have enough room in the soffit, so they would be wall-mounted with shut-offs on them. Those are centrally located on the roof, too, they're not near the perimeter, so.
It would be indirect where it shines down.
It would be shielded.
Definitely, definitely. But they would be required at those doors.
They're required safety, but they don't have to be directed.
And, and lighting on the trellis, was that something that the applicant was looking for? Because that would be more visual than, than the wall, the wall sconces if you're looking.
Can I make a suggestion? Put lighting on the inside of the parapet walls facing down and in. So that, I don't, I don't personally like the idea of having string lights or anything, lights up here on that roof. I think that should be banned, kind of, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's code violation or not, I don't like that bit of lighting. But if you provide enough light around the perimeter of the deck, it'll make, you don't want it dark either, because I don't think one light at the door is going to light up that large.
The deck on the parapet.
I think that, yeah, down, yeah, lighting on the parapet, oh, we saw that.
So basically, LED string lighting around the coping of the parapet?
They work with lights, yeah, they can put lights, they can put it anywhere.
Just down.
Yeah, they can put puck lights that just being, you know, tattered pavers and on the perimeter.
Down so it's short.
Do pretty well.
I want to come back to our engineers questioning. Um, for the trellises, it would have a height limitation not to exceed the height of the stair tower roof would be our limitation, is that an acceptable condition?
Did we make that, the fascia, instead of the peak roof? Like the, the, I don't know how low the fascia is.
My concern is if you put it close to the man, you're going to see it.
We'll talk about limitation, right? So now you're talking about offsets. But you're saying it's a very flat roof. If you look at those renderings, right there?
A little slow.
Little slope, little slope on those.
Over the stairs?
Over the stairs.
Yes, to, to adhere to the height. And, and, and for the rendering, until you're up on upper floors of buildings across the street or on the safe side, there, you won't see them. Point out the-
She's up here?
I know, yeah, but also the rendering, you don't see them from ground level at all. But you'll see them from upper floors in, you know, nearby buildings. But yes, this is a very low, very low sloped roofs up here. But they do, you don't see them from the street.
You won't street, see them from the street if they're not brought out right to the edge of the parapet.
The trellises, you're talking, I'm only talking about those, right?
Oh, those other roofs I'm not worried about.
Right.
So the trellises, in theory, would get much closer to the edge of the bed.
And, and maybe you want to consider that, that they hold three feet in or something. They're, they're large roof decks, so.
That would be one, and that's, I don't, the height of the fascia of those elevator roofs, rather than, I think it would look silly if you have, and any, any structure sitting lining up with the peak of that roof so far away. I would, as long as it's high enough and it doesn't, not like six feet tall. That, that fascia would be a much better spot as far as a height limitation of any kind of trellis.
What do you have, Barry, what do you have on that height?
And this is hard to determine, because you don't really know the height of the paver necessarily, but the pedestals, but.
Well, the height of the roof is, um, only fifteen inches from the peak to the fascia.
That's the coping, to the coping.
To the fascia.
For the very top of the roof, to the underside of the fascia.
Got you, that's your turn, you're, you're-
Fifteen inches.
Got you.
So we're at forty-three feet from the center line of the road elevation to that very peak. So if we back off fifteen inches, that could be the top of the trellis and have enough roof to work. Because you need, you need the trellis.
So you're running that with the fascia or the peak?
Well, the fascia. Typically in a trellis or pergola, you have the members that go across, and then there's a dropped beam you have to fit under it.
Right.
So I would, I wouldn't want it any lower than the bottom of the metal of the roof or the top of the fascia. That's fifteen inches down from forty-three feet.
The worst, I think, would end up being more sensitive, easy.
But that, your point is that it's fifteen inches to the underside of, of a trellis, of a pergola or trellis, correct? That fifteen inch point is to the underside.
To the top.
No, I'm saying it's to the top of that, but if you put out a trellis or you put out a pergola, where, how does that fifteen inch play? Is that to the top of the pergola?
Well, I don't think we're attaching these.
No, but a visual height.
That should be, that should be the beam, and then the, the pieces on top would have to be above it, or, or you won't. You're going to want eight feet below them.
Right. My, so that was my question.
Yeah.
Fascia to roof deck, about eight feet?
Yeah.
That's right, that was my question. Yeah, so lining up with the fascia would be acceptable.
Yeah.
Lining up with the fascia would be acceptable.
Yeah.
So let's frame, let's frame this out as a condition. So what we're talking about is any structure that's put up on the roof, um, the, uh, the underside of the trellis or pergola would be, uh, at the same height as the stair tower fascia. And it would be held back from the parapet wall, um, three feet or more to pull back.
Yeah, that gives you room to walk around it, yeah.
Right? As a condition to the application. We have the condition outlined for the gas. If we're structuring, we have that tangent, we just know that.
It seems pretty clear if you're, uh, go back.
Any other questions? I know we were in your hands and we got off on that tangent, but.
No, I have nothing further, I'm just anxiously waiting to hear the discussion on parking.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, we're just all very relieved.
What utilities are going to be, obviously, we're talking about electric, will access to electric? Is there going to be access to water, water drainage? Um, obviously, we're talking about.
Nope.
Yes, it will be.
Yes, electric.
Yes, kind of electric and water.
You may want to consider a spigot to clean up there per human.
So we're limited to spigots?
I think that's important, to clean.
Yeah. I would, would have expected that, without, no, six, no.
It's insane, I mean, this is-
Well, as soon as you start talking grills and pergola, you start to think of those things, though. Dish washers? No dish washers?
Each of those have their own restrictions, without one of them.
Was that, I'm sorry?
Said, where are guests and electric, and each of those have their own restrictions, without one of them.
Anything else with this, uh, this witness?
I have.
This witness?
Yes, a stormy, a stormer?
Yes. I haven't heard all that, yeah.
So the, uh, my two questions were, one is the, the recharge tank, I guess, that's going back on property.
Correct.
How far is that? Is that, is there a chance that, you know, if you're putting the water back in, it's close to the property line, is that going to cause issues for, like, an older house that is, you know, maybe pretty close to that property line? Is it going to cause, right, um, issues? Basically, if the water is flowing off of the asphalt now, right? And now instead we're recharging it into the ground, is, is there a reason why the recharge tank is pushed so far back? Or can it be pulled a little further off the property line?
So we, we can put it, we're, we have it right now, it's about six feet off the property line. Uh, there's a detached structure behind the property, it's about five foot off. And some are filled in, or about twenty feet from the building to the front end. So it could be slid back, which that's what the board wants, but it's designed, or the recharge and overflow, for all the structures that are joining or detached structures, there's no basements, so to the-
I didn't know if that was a house right there, or-
Yes, a garage or- It's a-
There's an area up there.
Do we have this, is it?
This is, yeah, it's like, he's reduced her.
It does, right.
Yep.
This is the area of, be back out.
Do others under your direction prepare that plan as a true and accurate aerial photograph of the area?
My office downloaded it off the internet, and stated that in the record.
I'm familiar with the, the area.
It will ask that you work to develop into the building record.
It's part, it's all, they already have it.
It has it.
So the structure behind it, as we talked about it, is five foot off. There's no basement, I believe it's on slab. There's a detached structure to the, to the north and also to the south, that are, again, are slabs. Here's a, if you look at, there's a, better below.
They have that, they have that.
So these are the three structures that are around the back of the property. By now, the property, you can see some water management, it goes everywhere. We're designing it, they capture it, and direct everything to the street. Even that the, the roadway is pitched towards the road, to the street. I mean, sorry, the parking lot area is pitched towards the street.
Where on the site plan is the?
Drainage system?
Yeah.
So if you look at she- So if you look at sheet, sheet number four. It's back by the trash enclosure under the parking spaces. Kind of see the three circles and a dead line.
Do you have any concerns about that location where those recharge systems are laid out?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add a few comments with regards to the existing conditions, or actually, Mr. Jensen, I'll ask you to confirm, that the existing drainage conditions are such that the paved area, behind, behind the building, pretty much the whole parking lots are paved, right?
Correct.
Entire sites paved. And that drainage pattern that exists now drains from the, from the front to the rear towards the rear of the property, right?
Correct.
So you're also opposing impervious pavers on the entire site?
Correct, the area that's not under the building, it's exposed, is all pervious pavers.
And then, so the pervious pavers will help permeate water as it makes its way to the collection system and then you're going to recharge your roof levers.
Correct, correct.
In that area. I don't necessarily have a problem with the location of the, of that area, I mean, it's under the parking stalls. I do believe that the storm recalculation that we received demonstrate that because of the change from pavement to pervious pavers, that runoff from the site is actually reduced, if I'm mistaken. So I'm hopeful that, I'm expecting that any impacts on neighboring properties would be mitigated by the fact that they're changing from pavement to pervious pavers and then they're taking the roof, roof runoff and recharging it, so. The location could be moved a little further away from the neighboring property to the east. Yes, I don't think it's going to make a big difference or have an impact on the property because they're going to be dispersed, what used to all runoff to the rear is now going to get dispersed more so over the site.
And their slab will degrade, which I think makes a big difference as well. There is an inlet going into the recharge?
Correct. That was just in the area, just in case there's any flooding or anything, you go in there and get to the street, it'd be the low spot, so during crazy storms, the any areas flooding from the neighboring properties could come into there and bypass our system and go out to the, to the streets, so flooding any rear yards or anything.
So you'll revise this to show that probably onto the curb?
Uh, correct, as we discussed.
Yep.
Right now we have a bubble and an inlet, but yes.
Only question I have is, is as you have it designed, does this system have the ability to hold four to six tons on top of it? Is there, it's below two EV spaces, which traditionally weigh four to six tons? And they give twelve thousand pounds?
We will look into that, yes. We'll have it designed to accommodate those vehicles.
And normally getting impacted, they're not getting.
With the inlet, that's often it could be coming overflow and now we're adding a pipe to the curb, do you talk about the grating so that we know that the overflow is going to go out instead of out?
Sure, so the elevation of the grate that we have, so we have, all the pipes are pitched towards the drainage system throughout the property, however, the grate there is lower than or equal to the grate in the back of the property. When we add the piping that proposed, it'll be even lower than the grate, so the bottom of the curb is eleven, eleven point one three and the inlet there is eleven three. So it's lower, so definitely we'll have the pitch going out to the street.
So from the, from the back grate here?
The back grate there, yes.
One.
From the back.
That's only eleven point three.
It's eleven three.
So you're saying point two, you're talking two, two inches higher than the curb?
Correct. It's just overflow, so the system itself.
I understand, but I'm worried, I'm worried about that, that case of overflow and that the water not getting, how big is the pipe, the overflow pipe?
The overflow pipe would have to be four, four, six inches, which, because you can't have it bigger than the base of the curb.
Right, so that could, that could back up pretty quickly in a large storm.
But also, just so the board understands, the overflow, the inlet in the front of the driveway is not going to be eliminated, so.
I'm not worried about that, I'm worried about the inlet in the back of the property overflowing into the other.
No, what I'm saying is, the, the, if it does start overflowing there, the property, at the property lines, it's eleven five, we have the inlet at eleven three and the front inlet's at eleven three as well, so if anything floods up in the system, it'll still flow out down the driveway first before it impacts the neighbors.
But.
Still coming forward.
Correct.
But in the same grade, so if the rear grate were a little bit higher, it would come in, in the front inlet first.
If I, if I raise, if we raise that grate up, correct. We're just trying to make sure we can.
Yeah.
Trying to.
Have a solution?
Questions? Allow when the overflow through the curb, even though it's a smaller pipe, it will be lower, so before it reaches that, say, max pipe of eleven three, it would actually start flowing out.
And you're, and now you have the six inch pipe coming to that, six inch pipe should be able to handle it. It would, it would take a lot, I always worry that there would be a four inch pipe coming the whole way.
No.
So that you have six to the inlet and then four out?
Correct.
That, that then, then we're a lot more protective source for like that six inch pipe, all the length.
You had mentioned that, that inlet initially had the bubbler feature, meaning it could overflow.
It just, yeah, it just meant that it was, we set the grate at an elevation that if it ever, like a twenty-five year storm, just say, the water would start flowing out that inlet down the driveway to the street instead of backing up into the backyard.
So we can do the four inch and keep that bubbler feature in case it overwhelms that four inch pipe?
Correct.
Okay, let's do that, please.
I think we said six inch, you have six inch.
So, uh, it's the, the pipe to go on from that inlet to the curb.
You think that should be.
The pipes to the inlet, from the inlet to the curb?
Correct, that would be the only one. We've, we've designed it to where it matched the curb face, like if it's, the curb face is five, we'll do four, if the curb face there is actually six, we can put a six inch.
If you're going to keep the inlet, then two fours, do two fours.
Correct. Two fours, we can do two fours coming out through the curb, yes.
So as a condition, we'll keep the bubbler feature, we'll put two four inch lines going to the curb.
Yeah.
All right? As a condition, that's acceptable to the applicant? Do I hear a yes? Because the recorder doesn't pick up dots, guys, just for the record?
Yes.
Thank you. Please, continue.
Last one on the order is, so the size, the size of the tank? What was the thought behind that?
So since the project is reduced, the project's reducing the garbage from the existing division and we're also collecting, designing a storm containing the one inch storm for the whole rooftop area of the building. Before, before you account for recharge, so it's.
Right.
So when it's collecting, it's going to be recharging at the same time, but we designed just to store the system.
Is one inch, I don't really know what, so one inch, is that like, uh, because I hear people say like, how many years?
Yeah, so like, uh, like a water quality, it's almost, uh, a water quality storm is almost two year or like one year event?
So if I, through the, normally a water quality storm is inch and quarter, there's, there's a different, uh, storm intensities that are designed typically on a new project. This project, because it's completely impervious now, did not meet the requirements for a major development, so we worked with the applicant's engineer to make sure that the stormwater from the site is reduced, not necessarily meeting any specific storm, but under all storm events, it should be reduced from the current day conditions along with the overflow.
You know, one other point, we were talking about the location of the recharge and Dynamic had done a stormwater based on location investigation, including soil borings to determine and concern and confirm that the soil is pervious where they're going to recharge. I think that's another reason to keep it where it's at, because they confirmed that that does perv at those two locations where they took the borders. Any other questions?
One other question for, uh, Mr. Jensen.
Anyone else with Mr. Jensen? Yeah, thank you. What's that, sir? Okay, uh, do you swear in testimony or did you give your board of the church?
I do. Hi, I'm John Tykeen, I'm licensed by the State of New Jersey, have been since I did my studies at Rutgers University in nineteen ninety-two, had the pleasure of keeping my license, a good standard for the last thirty-two years, they've come to that challenge, have testified for both our seven-five boards around the State of New Jersey, including missile.
Hello, Mr. Tykeen is a nice person, please.
Thank you so much.
Sean, did you prepare a study to report to the board on this application?
I did.
Could you do that?
Thank you. Basically, I'm here to say we comply. We took great pains to make sure that we comply with all provisions of the C-4K Development Plan and we do in terms of all zoning provisions. You've heard extensive testimony about the pipe setbacks, all those, all those good things. We do need one bit of relief and that is a waiver from the requirement for a thirty-degree pitched roof. It is impractical in this condition with a, how these mixed-use buildings are letting themselves out. It's best, laying on Main Street is best to have the full height at Main Street and then ramble ram. I think the board has done a nice job, first of all, Mary did a nice job and Jeff did a nice job of including the pitch developments, showing on a element to give us the feeling of that pitch roof and I think the board did a nice job of carrying that element down for the rest of Unit Two, so that where that front facade has, has a good, a good sense of that element and I think that the request is certainly reasonable and I think the board has the ability to grant it and I think it's a better plan as presented than what we'd be doing a bunch of full pitch routes all around it. We do have some additional height that we can take advantage of, but again, I think that it's most appropriate, provides the building to do in a quiet manner and have a waiver for that, for that one. In terms, in terms of the rest of my testimony, I'll talk a little bit about, a little about parking. The requirements of your ordinance are to provide parking. So we're required to provide two parking spaces for every unit and we're required to provide one parking space for any three hundred square feet of daytime commercial use and those uses are allowed to share. So parking requirements are unique and our parking requirement is eight and we provide nine and we comply. The ordinance and the redevelopment plan contain no further requirements about how those nine parking spaces are used, other than the fact that there's an E V space as required by the state law. And we also agreed apparently as part of our redevelopment agreement to provide for an E V charging space, which we are doing.
Is that one or two?
The agreement is for one that I believe is going to cover two spaces.
So it's a dual unit?
It is a dual unit, correct. The cha, the challenge is this, okay? Under the state statute, an E V parking space is almost just like a handicap place. If you don't have an E V, you're not supposed to park there. Now, do I believe that someone is going to the hundred fifty feet off the street to try and enforce that in the back of the parking lot? No. But that is the position that we do place ourselves, as we continue to develop our E, our E V infrastructure. So we're happy to do it, we understand it, but I think we all agree and understand that we're going to have parking spaces on this site that are going to be shared and they're going to be shared by a bunch of people, they're going to be shared by park, by people using our daytime use, they're going to be used by visitors, they're going to be used by residents and they're going to be used by E V people, because people are going to look and they're going to see an E V space and they're going to be, oh, I can be at the store and they're going to go park in it and they're going to charge for parking.
John, just to interrupt you for a minute, though, you did, um, confirm earlier that one unit, that every unit will have at least one designated space, correct?
That is, that is what we expect as an operational thing, is that we will provide for one space likely underneath the building that will be for each unit and then the other four spaces in the back will be the share units for visitors, users with daytime use, et cetera. And, and then likewise, you know, understand how E V works now? The, the way most E V works now is you hire a company that says, you know, you hire, you know, E V O or whatever it is and say, hi, E V O, I'll let you put a parking, I'll let you put an E V, an E V charger on my property and you're going to charge for the use of that as, for your use of your network or to be able to walk in, sit, park in it, whatever the case may be, and I'm going to, and then the property owner will have to cut of that. That, that's a general way that it's working all over the country right now, so, um, and I, we don't have any idea how it's going to be up here, we just know there's going to be an E V space there, but there's no restriction on how it's used, how it's charged, not charged, whatever the case may be, all that pricing element is going to come down line, you know, by the condo owners themselves.
Are you taking, while you're sitting, are you taking any additional credits for E V parking? Like you have nine physical spots.
We could, we didn't.
You don't need it because you don't need it.
No, we need it.
So you're not counting it as eleven?
Correct.
For the board's purpose, you couldn't be counting this as?
We could be counting the two spaces as, uh, well, you don't get the full benefit, you only get additional one.
Right, sure, so it could be ten.
Right, could be ten.
Since these will all be, um, owned, they're all condos, for sale units, will there be any mechanism in place, say, that like, they're all three bedroom units, right? If one, one unit has like four cars and they take up their designated space and then they, you know, park three cars in the rear spaces, is there any way to stop them from doing that so that every unit has the ability to?
I'm, I'm sure the condo owners are going to operate their condo association the way that they want to operate their condo association.
Can I make a suggestion on that?
But if the spots are shared for the commercial public use, how, how does that happen?
Again, we're going to sign that these spaces are for, you know, for commercial use between nine, whatever, daytime, daytime hours, whatever it is, but that's, that's the provision of the site plan. Provision of the site plan is to provide some, how the property introduced and operated is going to be up there.
My other thing is I really want to see two spaces per unit. Is there a way, and the E V kind of throws a wrench in this idea, that you can, in those four spaces in the back, say, promotional parking, whatever, nine to five, after five P M, unit one, or after, but then the E V kind of presents a problem?
The E V, the E V is going to present a problem with that and just, and just driving patterns in general are going to provide a problem with that. Again, our, our experience with downtown units and even with multi-family, multi-family units in general, is parking generation is down dramatically. So even when you talk about, why did you do the bonus to the E V, you know, oh, you gave two for one bonus, because you're giving away asset winners, we didn't need it, because typical parking demand is about half a space below what R S, what R S I has in setting up. So it's significantly below, uh, demand and that's for all multi-family units, let alone downtown multi-family units where it's even lower than that.
Can I ask you a question about the E V charging?
Yeah.
Is that part of the developer's agreement that you're installing those?
It is.
It's required?
That, that is, that is what I understand, is that that is in the developer's agreement, yes.
E V ready or E V charging station installed?
One, one E V ready station.
Ready? Is one unit in the proposed development, one E V ready?
E V ready. E V ready, so it doesn't, in a station that's installed?
Correct.
Okay, so therefore, the proposal that Mike offered could make sense, whereas signage could control use and then dictate condo ownership assignment after hours.
Yeah, could, but I recommend to you that. Yeah, could, but I recommend to you that ownership is uneven across units.
I think the units can discuss that amongst themselves.
Right.
So I still think it should be two designated spots per unit, if possible, after that five P M, given the shared space.
But we can put a sign to life.
As a board, you know, I understand that, I'm just trying to get two designated spaces. Versus those four units are the, are free for all, I think, to your point.
Can we just focus more on the design?
U A has three.
Do you want to put, let's, let's put two signs for a commercial space that you deserve a commercial space between, I guess, nine and five? Or whatever the common business hours are, is nine to five, which is generally what you have?
You have eight to six on your five.
Whatever the ordinary states.
Okay, so we'd say nine to five deserve the commercial. And post nine to five, or any other option?
It'll be one sign.
You want to assign two or three?
Yeah, one sign would be one sign, yeah. Right, I, I would, I would.
So, the mayor has an interesting question, which is enforcement. So it won't be enforced unless the condo association takes action on it.
Correct.
It's not a police matter.
Correct.
It's an internal matter, they need to deal with it internally.
Correct.
But I think this helps at least try to steer parking to Miss Bell's concern. And allows us to at least walk away with comfort that each condominium is assigned two spaces in some form of a controlled mechanism.
So the proposal for signage would be acceptable to our client. You recognize the enforcement provisions are not, uh, open to the public, so to speak. But you would, uh, agree to nine to five for commercial on those two spaces? And then there will be eight spaces assigned to the four apartments.
Yeah, but it would be for, it would be for the four spaces.
Four.
Oh, the four spaces.
Four are assigned under the building, one ADA is not assigned. The four in the back will have those signs and it'll say apartment, you know, condominium unit or wherever you call them, one through four. I'm sorry if you had to comment.
Mr. Chairman, no, no need to apologize. I, the one thing I just would like to point out, while there's not police enforcement, there's code enforcement that can step in.
Step in.
If by chance the u, the parking space, not the ones that are undercover, but these ones that we're discussing, are not being assigned to a unit, then code enforcement, if it's in the, if it's in your resolution this way, then code enforcement can step in and say, no, each of these four units hasn't had one of these spaces.
Okay. So you're agreeing to signage?
I understood.
Is that possible?
If you're assigned, if you're assigned, if you're assigned, it can be enforced, only the ones that are assigned can be enforced.
Two signs or four signs? We're talking four signs for four stalls and they'll have units one through four. And list the business hours available for commercial use.
So it's one station?
Four.
To one station?
Please clarify, that was your client, but is the four spaces alone in back or two?
Alone in back.
Alone in back.
Our sign, no. Our redevelopment agreement provides for one station, which is back by.
Yeah.
For that. Well, the four is imposing a condition.
The redevelopment agreement has a charging station required?
One charging station.
Not E V ready, but E V installed charging station. Well, you still have to assign, it's just somebody may be using an E V charging station, somebody may not. You can assign a non-E V spot to someone with a non-E V.
On a, those four charging stations would be accessible to the public, if you like, commercial spaces?
Yeah. The word for, for, for.
Okay.
All right. Even with the charging stations, neighbors can work that out.
Also, we can change units if somebody comes in with a Tesla or a Honda. All right, we're getting, switching to sign.
Take one spaces.
All right.
A question, I want to make clear, I buy a unit and I'm, I have a handicap plate. So to be understood that I don't park in the handicap spot, right? Because I have a, I have my own spot.
Your spot might not be bigger if the handicap spot is bigger.
You wait until then if there are a handicap stall plus.
Well, no, what I'm saying is that, that, I would assume that that handicap spot should be kept open, not for, not necessarily for the spot.
Defer to the engineers if you can regulate that. You can't tell someone with a handicap.
You can't tell someone with a handicap plate where they can park.
Mr. Mayor, the handicap spaces are bigger, they're, they're intended.
No, what I'm saying is if I'm a, I'm a handicap person, like I try to get it to that spot and the tenant is in that spot with a handicap spot. Is that, is that the gist of what we're trying to say?
You can't regulate that.
Can't, you know?
Can't regulate that.
The, the rest, the, the site plan regulations are to provide these elements.
So I mean, I could have three spots.
Right.
If I wasn't having, if I had a handicap spot, I could have two others.
Correct.
Not the least.
Sometimes light is a pair of you.
I know.
You're buying a two-story condo with an interior stair, so almost unlikely the needle be there.
The handicap spot is designed for somebody who needs that spot. If I already have a pre-assigned spot for the building, then I don't need that handicap spot.
But you're assuming they might not have a ramp van, right? So that person could require a ramp van. They could need the width of that handicap spot.
Well, that's a different issue.
Yeah, and I also think, I want to just emphasize what Mary said, which was that these units are not really accessible. The bedroom level is not accessible at all.
In one unit, there's a bedroom on a lower level.
So the chances of someone really having an ADA.
You're going to just hope that somebody goes to these.
Well.
You follow the law and the codes.
Exactly. We're fol- we're following law. That's all we can do, follow the law.
Different shapes and sizes.
Yeah. There's not much you can do about that. Okay, continue, please.
Uh, certainly, so, um, going through, uh, Ms. Bell's report, there she had a couple of questions that I, I'll just address directly.
Did you go through the traffic data or you just?
Traffic data.
I said it's good, we're good to go.
Uh, yeah, traffic, we're good to go.
So can we spend a couple of minutes on that?
Sure, no worries.
Okay. So, when I look at the trip generation, I don't know if you have that.
Uh, no, this is the trip generation for the six-unit building, not the four-unit building. It wasn't advised when you came outside, but please go ahead.
I'm not sure which one I have, but I have.
Number two.
Number two.
Was there a new, was there one?
It's six or four, what are we looking at?
This report was done for our initial submission, which was a six-unit building. After, after several review letters, the applicant decided to revise the building from six units to four units. Apparently, we did not revise the traffic stuff.
So the data is worthless.
Uh, it is worthless to the effect that, um...
Projected data is worthless.
Projected, you know, if you can, six to four, that ten residential trips would be seven residential trips. And again.
So what does this do, I mean, so then you're going to walk through us with, with us and try to explain what the data should be? So for the P M peak hours, what's the proposed going to be on enter and exit?
Our proposed enter and exit for P M peak will be, um...
Is it two-thirds of these numbers?
Yes.
Pretty much.
Attention.
Weren't you going from six one bedrooms to four three bedrooms?
But the multi-family, uh, unit, um, trip generation is irrespective of unit size, bedroom size. Number of bedrooms must be determined. Thank you.
So it doesn't concern itself with bedroom?
Does not.
What's it based on, just a unit?
A unit. And actually, that, that, um, that multi-family code is actually one of the more robust, uh, for apartments, code two nineteen. It's actually one of the more robust codes in the I T literature, so.
Your bus for what standpoint?
It has, uh, hundreds of, um...
Requires more space.
No, no, it has hundreds of, of properties that are, hundreds of data points. As opposed to some of them, uh, for example, there, there are some of them in there for big box stores where there's six examples. So.
So the data, the data behind this.
Data is much better for more robust.
Okay, thank you.
So can we get to a P M peak?
Uh, P M peak is?
Instead of twenty-six?
Instead of twenty-six, it's, uh...
Nineteen?
Eighteen.
And then projected trip generation, once again, is two-thirds?
Correct.
So instead of ninety, it's sixty? Instead of eighty-nine, it's closer to sixty, right?
Yes.
And instead of ninety-one, it's closer to sixty?
Correct.
For Saturdays? Which is comparable to what's existing?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Our commercial space is actually reducing dramatically on the property.
Can you go through Ms. Bell's letter?
Um, Ms. Bell, I had a, I had a couple of questions. When we got formal housing, uh, we will be compliant with, uh, your, your formal housing fee orders. Uh, we pay one point five percent of the net increase in residential assessment. Uh, likewise, um, we will have a, uh, we'll have a non-residential fee calculation. Uh, non-residential is actually, it's a net. So again, we're reducing the, uh, the net calculation, so we're reducing the commercial space on the property. I don't expect us to have a non-residential fee at all, but we will be making a, a one point five percent of the residential increase. Um, in terms of, uh, signage, we'll have some compliant commercial signs. Uh, Ms. Bell likewise asked about compliance with our, uh, with the, uh, multi-end development code of your base of end development. Um, most of that doesn't apply, it's really set up for like regulating the penthouse development. Um, so for example, we don't have, uh, any ground floor, any ground floor, uh, rear, uh, outdoor areas, um, to have privacy. Um, we don't have multiple buildings, so I have the, the distance of the building that apply. Uh, we don't have any, uh, the building face of the right-of-way requirement in the multi-family development code is a hundred twenty feet. The Seaport redevelopment standard is zero, so we're following the Seaport redevelopment standard. Um, garage, garages and parkours likewise, um, not having courtyard, we don't have any. Uh, we have a screen area for, uh, recycling. Uh, we comply with the minimum gross floor area requirement of three bedrooms, you have eleven hundred fifty square feet. Uh, our bedrooms, uh, any room that is not a dining room, kitchen, bathroom, or living room is a bedroom in our unit, so we comply. And, uh, we don't have any other spaces other than these. Uh, um, uh, in terms of our lighting plan, you have a test? Go ahead.
Uh, doesn't multi-family, you know, I don't know if this counts as multi-family, but, uh...
I, I believe it, okay.
It, I, one of the things I think it says is required to have open space, multi-family development, no?
Uh, I don't believe it's required, no.
Multi-family development shall be required to provide open space. It's four and dash here.
We have, uh, several.
They do have the rooftop access.
Yeah, we have roof, we have outdoor on roof. No, that's good, good. Uh, lighting, I'll re-apply, I can still have property lines. Uh, it's great that we have, um, soft lights in all the balconies. Uh, I think the board, they, um, made some good suggestions for the roof, uh, the lighting up there. And, uh, likewise, residential roof will be, uh, residentially scaled, regulated like that. I would like to write in a thing of home and borough, but I guess we're taking some additional, uh, restrictions on top of that. So other than that, um, we are pleased to be compliant with the Seaport redevelopment plan. And we think it's going to be a great new development.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Any questions beyond what he's discussed from your review letter?
No questions.
Thank you. Sturrs, any questions?
So, Mr. Chairman, um, not of Mr. Tykeen, I don't believe, um, and with regards to our review letter, I think the applicant engineer has touched on just that everything in our review letter. Um, while I'm here, I'm just going to kind of go through my notes and double-check myself.
Okay.
Because there was some, uh, additional, additional things that we discussed in the, the, your stance, I'm not sure.
Okay, so please circle back if something comes up. Any questions from other board members that haven't voiced those? Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that is the, that concludes the presentation. The application was as presented, seeks no variances, as has the labor from the rooftop slope. Mr. Tykeen had just applied that in his claim in testimony. Uh, we all understand this. And, uh, for the number of, uh, requests, if you will, or imposition of additional, additional requirements during this hearing to modify plans, all of which have been discussed and after some debate and agreement between the applicant and the board at least in light understanding from our rights statute and watch. And, uh, the application is entitled to an approval, meets the standards of this redevelopment zone. It seeks no, uh, no unusual relief. It creatively addresses all of the issues and concerns that we're best within the Seaport redevelopment plan and in the Seaport redevelopment design criterias. Um, the application is entitled to an approval, I'm going to ask the board to vote in favor of the application. Both the conditions that we discussed concerning the rooftop use, the, uh, the criteria for the trellises, which seem to be very significant to the board, the parking issue, uh, and the signing and designation of the parking spaces. I think we went around two or three different versions, we came up with a result. Our client will comply with that. And, um, we don't think there's a whole lot of, uh, other open issues since there is almost substantial compliance with the rules.
Thank you very much. Sturrs, anything else?
I'll check, I'm not supposed to turn that up further, can I?
Ms. Bell?
No further.
Okay, thank you. All right, if anyone from the public would, uh, like to make a comment about this application, please step forward. State your name, spell it, and provide your street address. Seeing no one, I'll close the public portion. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the application? Actually, Dan, if you don't mind, running through the conditions first?
Sure. All right, and correct me if I'm wrong in my understanding. All right, so one of the conditions is the, uh, the walls between, um, the rooftop, uh, six foot in height, step down to about forty-two inches as per.
And which unit was that between?
Three and four.
Between units three and four?
The other ones will be the maximum height of the, uh...
Um, on the southern elevation, um, the siding, uh, windows, they have a faux window to break up the siding. And there'll be a stand seen roof carried around there too.
To the depth.
Only for unit one.
To the depth of unit one.
The depth of unit one. All gas and electric meters need to be within the, uh, building footprint, uh, interior, not exterior. Uh, the trash enclosure, uh, fencing with six foot. Uh, the applicant will adhere to the burrows, trash and recycling, uh, dimensions required.
That's containers, by the way. And the trash enclosure is actually brick, not fence.
Uh, all grills on the rooftop must be fixed in place as a permanent structure?
Correct.
All right. So any roof structure cannot exceed the stair tower fascia, um, and must be, uh, at least three feet from the paraply wall.
So it's, it's the underside of any roof structure cannot exceed the fascia, underside of the fascia?
The height.
The height.
We're going to keep the, the public feature, uh, there'll be two four-inch lines, uh, there, correct? And we'll be, we have the four signs for the parking.
And no lighting, I, I wish, no.
No lighting on the trellis?
Okay, on the paraply instead of straight lines. And the step back of the trellis is measured to the trellis, not to the column, measured to the actual trellis?
Correct. To the face of the trellis.
They were going to try to see if there was room to, to the kitchen?
Uh, they were going to, yeah. So they were going to do a, engineer was going to go, go with, no intensive, um, turning analysis to see if we can move the parking stalls back two feet and install four foot plus or minus.
Regardless of that, they were going to install higher. Regardless of that, they were going to install higher bushes?
Yeah, either way, they're still making that change to the trash enclosure, the plan has changed.
Correct.
The narrow but tall, four to six foot tall, are provided. All right, can I have a motion to approve the application conditions as outlined? I'm sorry, word comments, please, let's start with that.
No comments.
Mike, sorry.
Mike's coming up. No, we always appreciate an application coming before us with no variances requested, and of course, even with that, working with our comments that we have as you work through it, making some great changes, I love the project. Thank you.
It's a quality project, thanks for bringing it to Main Street Mel, and it's very, I approve of the physical look, and it's a pretty project.
I like the exterior and the back that's only four units.
Right, we get hit sometimes with these giant developments, and they're overwhelming, this fits in nicely with what we have in mind.
Mr. Mayor?
No comments.
So I said this at the TRC, I'll say it here as well, I think this project is probably a model of what we can do for redevelopment on Main Street. We're always struggling to find a way to assist our downtown business owners finding opportunities to make the most out of property, and I think this, this particular project, you know, multiple variations of it, Mary, not cookie covers, but certainly, I think this is something that can be repeated on Main Street, and done in such a way that it will continue to add an attractive look to our Main Street. So I like the breaks in the facade, I like the look, I think you've creatively come up with a way to include commercial space, but limited, as we try to do with Bellmark, we have a lot of commercial space, but did so with, with being able to bring in four units, adequate parking, hidden behind. There's nothing not to like about this, I think you've done a good job, I think there were a lot of conditions outlined today that I think just helps improve the project. I think all those were not necessarily heavy ask, but ones that are helping dial the project in to be more successful, so I'm very much in favor of the application. So, starting over again, can I have a condition, excuse me, a motion to approve the application with the conditions as outlined by Dan, our attorney?
I'll motion.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Caponi?
Yes.
Mr. Delazio?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterman?
Yes.
Mr. Loomis?
Yes.
Mr. Sharpes?
Yes.
Here's a question.
Yes.
At this point, if there's anyone from the public who'd like to make a comment outside of this application, just in general, to the planning board, please step forward, state your name, spell it, and provide your street address. Seeing no one, I'll close the public portion, I'll ask for a motion to approve the season meeting.